The school board of education meeting for February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, everybody. Thank you and welcome to our meeting.
Hey, it is.
I'm not walking this door.
Katie, you better go, girl.
Three seconds, darling.
Oh, actually, hard. All right. Well, all right, we're gonna hit roll call attendance. I can't get this off my page now. There we go. Called order pledge of allegiance, public signing, roll call, roll call. We're all here.
Right here.
We're good to go.
You go there.
Public comment?
No public comment, good to go.
Excellent, thank you, Marsha. You're always an excellent helper. Right? Okay, consent agenda board, I would take a motion, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Oh, that was Katie.
All right, we're good. It's Katie.
It's Katie.
All right, I got Liz on the motion, Katie on the second, and please call the vote.
Mrs. Huff?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
I'm gonna abstain because I have a check in the bills for reimbursement.
All right. Mrs. Kraus?
Aye.
Mrs. Willie?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Rorty?
Aye.
And Mrs. Kimmery?
Aye.
Lovely, thank you, board. All right, board of gentlemen and communication, we're gonna let Katie get seated into her position there, so we'll start on this end. Carrie, what you got going on? Um, well, I just wanna say congratulations to all the students who are on the honor roll. Just today, there was a lot of kids on there, that's pretty cool. Um, and it looks like we've got some wrestlers in the finals, so that's very exciting. Actually, a lot of.
Eight boys and two girls.
Yeah, that's a lot, so very good. Um, thank you to Jason and Erin for giving Mary and I tours of Mockingbird and Bloomfield. Uh, Mockingbird's coming, I don't know. Yeah, it is. Um, and then I am looking forward to participating with the culinary competition at the high school on Thursday, so kids can cook. Um, yeah, so that's what I've got going on so far. Awesome, well, that was super fun. The culinary thing is always gonna be so, so do you need help for a moment? All righty.
Hello, good evening, board. I'd like to second what you said as well, but also just wanna make note about the scholars who are recognized. A lot of them are busy. They're going to other activities, extracurricular activities, work, so kudos to them. Um, hard work does pay off, and also thank you to all the teachers that continue to support them to strive to be better scholars. Um, that's all I have for an update.
Good afternoon, direction, Ms. Rory?
Uh, let's see, um, thank you to the ambassadors for their efforts to raise funds for the Ralston Schools Foundation, um, for the student emergency fund. And congratulations to Seymour principal Jody Blesson and her team. Uh, they were recently honored at the two thousand and twenty-four National ESEA Conference in Portland, and that was for closing the achievement gap, so wonderful accomplishment there. Um, and thank you for the building tour for the Building and Grounds Committee, Jason, so appreciate that. And I attended the Ralston Schools Foundation meeting and got to tour Wildwood, so we'll talk a little bit about that further in the agenda.
Thank you. All right, and Mrs. Kraus, how's it going?
It's good. Everyone else took all the good things, lots of good things on social media. I was very excited to see the snowplows. Got there, got their stick. That was very fast. I was impressed by the speed of getting those done, so thank you for everyone at the gym when it was all done. Um, the names were awesome, uh, and I went to the show choir performance. I think that has been since last meeting, and our, my daughter asked me, why am I not also singing at dance practices already? She did four, so she's Ralston class of like twenty forty-something. I don't even know. I don't know, but it's. I think the baby's class of twenty forty-one, so she's like, I know, isn't that crazy? Yeah, I feel.
I might be good, but.
Um, yeah, yeah, so we went to that and it was wonderful, and then we stayed and watched some of the sports, intramural sports going on at the gym afterwards as well, so it's lots of fun.
Nice.
So, yeah, and, uh, there's something that I said, I said, oh, yeah, and then Seymour, we're really super excited about Seymour's award and go to that. And I will also be at the culinary competition on Thursday. I'm all about some snacks, so I saw a chance to participate and have some snacks.
Like three-course meals.
I know, I was like, I am not missing out on that opportunity, so.
All right. The trick is to pace yourself. Don't. Oh, yeah. The first meals will be so good, you'll want to eat all of it, but don't.
I'll be too full. Just a little bit at a time.
Pace yourself, yeah, so, yeah, I'll be judging as well. Um, attended the Wildwood family game night. Was that Tuesday? Last Tuesday?
Yeah, the sixth.
Never knew there were so many different games. Yeah. My gosh, and there were lots of families there having a great time. Um, popcorn was served, that was good. Um, and then I was introduced to the game of Monokalla. Yes. I've never heard of it before. It's a very old, old game.
Yeah.
Um, I've been attending the legislative Zoom meetings on Thursdays, and good luck to the wrestlers going to stay. All righty, so I'm gonna start off and say a great big thank you to the high school staff that acted quickly this week, and when they smelled gas in our building, made sure that everyone was safe and taken care of, and that the building was safe. So, thank you very, 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 very much. That could have ended so much more badly than it is. But, yes, so thank you, yes, just thinking about what could have happened is. So, thank you. I attended the show choir debut night two weeks ago with Katie, and I went to their competition at Westside on the following Saturday. Um, hit the basketball game on the sixth, but mostly to watch the pep band. They were awesome. Um, and then I also got a tour of good old Mockingbird with Jason Buckingham this week, so it was a good week. Um, yeah, and other than that, I had a president's retreat with NASB last weekend. It was very informative. It's always funny to watch the new presidents, like, you know, it's gonna be okay, Marsha's gonna walk you through it. Um, but, yeah, it was really, it's great to learn from those people who've been there in this position for a long time and really hear about what they have to say, so it was a good time. And I think that that is all from member updates, so Jason Buckingham, take it away.
Okay, lots to report here. We'll try and keep it brief as possible. Reminder, it's been three weeks since the last time we met, so this seems like a lot. Keep in mind, this was spread over three weeks. Had a meeting with Rava that went really well. They have an interest in trying to use our field some in the summer when it's down, so that was a good.
Tell them what Rava is.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Ralston Area Baseball Association, so, sorry, we're acronym-heavy here. Um, we had a bid opening for Karen Western, which you'll see that item on the agenda here to follow up. The bid was pretty favorable for what we had budgeted, so we're excited for board approval on that one tonight. Um, I also attended the show choir performance. I got to sit next to Dr. Vavanka, uh, which was kind of nice because that was the first time he'd unveiled the scratches that he'd had. And if anybody had come by and asked him what had happened, um, I got blamed for it, for being abusive, so. And I didn't deny that, so I'm sure there's lots of kids out there that think that I'm an abuser.
Oh, Mr. Buckingham, so mean.
So, uh, we also had a bridge board meeting, and that's something that we'll bring up in a, in a future date. Um, I would like to update the board on what we're getting for our expenditure that we put in, that commitment we made to the bridge a year ago. Somehow I ended up, I'm vice chair of that organization now, so I'll have more to add on that, and we'll make sure the board's informed on what we're getting out of our investment. We had a GNSA meeting down in Lincoln, followed up by a Senator Social, so we were able to meet with several of the senators there after hours at Billy's, and that was, that was different. But we, we were able to, um, I think make some pretty good headway. I had another senator from, I don't know, I gotta remember what town he's from. Um, I think he was from Columbus, um, that had some questions about CEP or that community eligibility program that we use at Karen Western where it's free lunch. Um, so you'll see legislation that's coming up. Senator Walls has a bill, bill coming forward um, that would, um, I wouldn't say entice, but make it more financially acceptable for districts like ours that have buildings that are eligible, but we would take a hit money-wise if we made that jump to CEP. Um, some of this could potentially help bridge that gap so that we could have Mockingbird Elementary, for example, is the next one up eligibility-wise, uh, to where maybe that building can be CEP just as Karen Western is as well, so more to come on that piece of it.
All right, everybody follow the acronyms that time?
Yep.
Okay, no, okay.
So, CEP, Community Eligibility Provision, again, that's why everybody at Karen Western gets free lunch and free breakfast down there, so.
So, basically a program where enough of the kids are at the level where they would need help, that they can just say the whole building needs it, okay?
The, the reason why we haven't converted over isn't, isn't, well, it is financial, but it, it works in a couple of different ways. One is, um, we end up taking a hit if we don't hit sixty-two and a half percent in our free and reduced lunch number, or excuse me, in our free lunch number. The way the federal reimbursements work with it, we need to have that high level for us to break even on it, um, which again is why Karen Western's high enough, Mockingbird's just slightly underneath it. They're probably gonna hit that, hit that threshold here, I would say, within the next two years at the most. Um, the other reason is, uh, we have some concerns about how our state aid formula is calculated. Um, specifically, poverty is one of the components that they put in to determine what your needs are as a district. When you go into a CEP program, the only way that they have to determine what your poverty level is is by direct certification, meaning that, you know, are they, say food stamps, but are they receiving assistance through something that's non-school-related? Well, we have had families historically in the past that will not fill out for SNAP benefits, but will apply for assistance for school lunches. They're qualified for it, but for whatever reason, they elect not to do it. Some of it might be concerns about citizenship status, some of it might be just a personal choice they have that they don't, don't wanna, you know, collect, um, collect TAN for, collect SNAP benefits. So unfortunately, what, what we found is that our, our real true poverty number tends to be less than what the direct, direct certification number is. That being the case, then that directly impacts our calculation for what our needs are based on poverty. So I haven't quite gotten to the point yet where I, I feel comfortable in, in taking that dive. Karen Western, I don't wanna say it's okay, but that's about half the size of a building, and what Mockingbird is. When you throw Mockingbird into the mix, and if that's our next one up, that can have an impact in a negative fashion on our state aid form, so. There is a little bit of a method to our madness with it, but I think we're gonna cross that threshold. We're at least one of those two areas will be met. And then again, with direct certification, uh, I have a feeling that, uh, Mockingbird is gonna be high enough that it won't dramatically affect our state aid form, so. More to come on that piece of it. I'm sorry, I got into more than I anticipated there, and I'm glad that you said, you know, we need to go through and explain that. We've got some members that weren't here while we made that conversion over.
And we probably need to do the same thing with the bridge program.
Yep.
Just give a little more background when we get there, okay?
Uh, okay, other things that we had, Building Grounds Subcommittee meeting, um, well, I'll just own this, that is the most fun subcommittee out there because we take.
All right, now, find us.
Find us where the party is. All right, bud.
So, we did, we did get to go through Mockingbird and Bloomfield. I, I would extend that out because it has been quite a while since we've been through those buildings. For the three that have not been through in a while, if you guys wanna go through, I'd be happy to take you through anytime. Now, if we can go after four to four-thirty, that's when usually they're shut down, so we can go through the building and not, not have a whole lot of worry about. So, if you do wanna, uh, do wanna run through and take a tour of that, or if you wanna go through Bloomfield, I'd be happy to take any other board members through that as well. Uh, gotta go to a girls' basketball game, uh, which was nice. We were so close. I thought we were gonna pull this one out. We ended up losing by two. The girls fought all the way to the end, so very proud of them. And then, um, I'd like to take a minute to recognize again our, our high school administration. Um, they have really navigated some tough waters this year with the death of Kristen Waller, and they really did, um, I thought, a, a very nice ceremony in between games for senior night. Kristen would, would, of course, have been a senior for us, um, where they recognized the, the senior athletes we have on the basketball teams. They also made sure to invite the family and have them out as well. Um, it really was kind of a neat experience. Dad got to come across court and like Kristen's jersey on, on the, uh, on the, uh, seats, uh, on the bench, and, uh, it, it really was kind of a, a, a very well-done event that the high school planned, so hats off to Dr. Vavanka and his, his administrators, Clint Williams. They, they just went above and beyond with that one, and I, I think it was something that they'll remember for quite a while.
Thank you.
Other things, uh, gotta go to the RCC Swim Meet. Had that on Friday and Saturday. I did not go on Saturday, but I did go on Friday to watch some of our kids compete. Then we had a foundation meeting, a Moec executive meeting, and, uh, and I've started to loosen up a little bit. We took a few of our members from the Mockingbird staff over on a partial tour of the building after everyone shut down, so. There's about ten of them now that have been through the building and, and got to see it, and very complimentary. They're excited to get in there and get started. Other than that, we haven't been doing a whole lot here.
Right?
Your brain just never moves. Well, you were reading it, Seymour too, the other, my, the other history class, I saw your, I asked my son, I'm like, did Mr. Buckingham read for your class? And he was like, I don't know who you're talking about.
And I, I love our elementary folks. They do great work, but I'm just not cut out for that. And it's Miss Darby's class, and she wanted me to read, and I said, okay, I'll, I'll do that, but unfortunately, it was right after lunch. And I'm just not used to the whole hugging thing. A couple of students that had some blend of mustard and cheese on their face, and I'm like, oh. Well, we got through it. It, it was okay. I, I had to find hand sanitizer, but it was, it was okay.
Does that mean you're not gonna read to Tiny Ramsen or not?
I don't mind reading, it's just.
He said he'd do Tiny Ramsen.
Tiny Rams also said that if any of us wanna come read to them, they are more than willing to work with our schedules.
Oh, cool.
Sorry, I forgot about that.
Jason, I'll make sure I schedule it right after they have lunch.
Let everybody get in on that.
So, um, with that, I'd like to welcome Dr. Vavanka, Ms. Athel, if you wanna come forward, we'll start with our valedictorian discussion.
It's timely since we named the valedictorians today even, so congratulations to Jovi and Cassidy.
Yeah.
Very excited for them.
Yeah.
All deserved.
All right.
Once we get Ryan situated, we can get rolling.
Sure, I'm comfy.
This is not a position I thought we'd be in.
So, thanks for letting us present tonight. We just, um, have some ideas of where we could take, uh, the current practice for, of naming valedictorians uh, and segue into a different practice that honors the achievements of more students. Uh, not to take away from the, the history or the years of naming valedictorians, but looking at the practice um, and, uh, looking at some of our neighboring districts and schools around the country. Uh, the trend is starting, is going to, uh, going to more of a Greek system, the cum laude, magna cum laude. Uh, so we put together some, uh, points to highlight, um, that discussion and to see where everybody's feeling, so.
We're last, sir.
Next slide.
Got it.
So, that's our current policy. I can't even read that.
Well, even if you can read it, you can't really understand.
It's very weird.
It, it's, it's confusing, so.
Yeah, I read that, I was like.
Yeah.
We, we currently run four different, um, ranking systems. One is a strict GPA. Um, one is a weighted, no, I'm gonna let you.
Yeah, so we have four different systems. We have the mark point average, which is your weighted average. Um, so really, the more honors classes you take and the less regular classes you take, which is the kicker of this, because they're missing out on opportunities, the higher your, um, ranking in that system. That's the one that they gain. So, that's the one that kids decide, how can I get the highest GPA so that I can be valedictorian? And they miss out on opportunities in classes that are not, um, weighted. The other one is TMP, which is total mark points, so that is the more classes you take, the higher the GPA, or the higher the ranking you can get. But that is not one of our official ones. That used to be our official one, and then they changed it to mark point average. However, total mark points gets, is part of the calculation in our district rank, which is like, literally, nobody else in the world has district rank except Ralston High School. And to be frank, I can't even tell you. I don't know how it's calculated. I know there's an ACT, there's a total mark point, point average, and really, it's a manipulative ranking system, to be frank, um, that is really just for us and not recognized by universities. The other one is a combo, which is a combo of your mark point average and your total mark points. So, we do have those four. We only honor two of them, and one is created by us.
Which yields some uncomfortable conversations, because students can see that they're number one in one, in one of the systems, but it's not the one that we're using. And they'll know because they talk to friends. There are years where the district, the winner of the district, uh, valedictorian spot would be considerably lower, um, than, than their class rank, and as, as peers, they know that, because they're constantly competing and having those conversations. Uh, if you can scroll up, Mr. Buckingham, that'd be great, or, or down, sorry, yeah. Uh, so we still honor, kinda, I mean, with, with the graduation cords and honors, we're already at looking at, uh, at a Greek system, really. I mean, we have the different tiers there. What we're proposing is, is expanding that, uh, and then moving away from the valedictorian system.
Are we using, are we following policy? Are we using SCRS and ACRS?
As the two?
As, as that's written, are we following that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, but there are four systems total?
There are four total, two that are not recognized by our, our, um, ranking system.
Um, if you can go down to the next slide, please. So, the current format, I mean, we will acknowledge there, I mean, the, the pros, so it does, as we did today, we celebrated those two scholars, and it acknowledges some years we've had three, but usually it's two. Um, and there can be three because.
You could have two number ones in MPA. They could potentially have the same.
Could tie.
Right, yeah.
Um, and it does motivate, and it's a competitive nature where they, they understand, um, how to achieve that, and, but like Stacy hinted at, that does call or cause some gamification of the system. Um, they load up with strictly AP and AR classes, um, and they, some, they miss out on other opportunities. We both taught electives before we moved into administration, so I experienced it firsthand. Some of my best students would just say, I'm sorry, um, I can't be part of this anymore because it's gonna, uh, water down my GPA. And it was tough to see if those kids go, but they were that driven on having to be that number one spot, or trying to be that number one spot. Um, some of the cons of a current system, uh, we talked about this, the, the district rank is confusing. It excludes many top scholars, so we, we posted today, we celebrated two. That is no, in no way meant to take away from the next ten, but they're all great kids too. Um, so there's, I mean, the, the number two, three, all the way down, uh, they're all great kids, but by point zero two, we're not talking about them today. Uh, but they worked just as hard and did it, and accomplished just as much. Um, I already said the game of five system, um, and it's pretty subjective that we're picking two of the four, and arbitrary, why are we not picking the other ones or, or honoring all four?
Right, and I might also add, like, really watching this unfold over the years, there are students that, just by the luck of the draw, and when they took classes and how they loaded them up, they ended up being valedictorian, that has nothing to do with the work that everybody else from a four-point order to a four-point-five have. I mean, really, they have done the same amount of work, they just didn't take the classes in the order that happened to fall in the way that they would land, um, one through ten, so.
It happened more when we were on a strict block. Um, if a student happened, if the computer happened to put them in fall, uh, at AR classes, and they, instead of the spring session, because we would run the report at the end of term three, so they had fewer. Now that we're on an eight-day, B-day rotation, that is largely taken out of this, out of the equation. Cue it out of the next slide, please. So, what we are proposing is that we would obviously need to, because this would be a, a change, so it would start with the class of two thousand and twenty-eight. Uh, just eliminate the practice, um, and adopt what many, many other schools across the nation have done, which is the Latin system. We would continue to still report and designate class rank because we, we do understand the importance of that for scholarships, uh, school admission and things like that. Um, and those are the three that we would still report out on. Um, but as far as come graduation time, we would honor a much larger group of students, uh, for their achievements. Uh, and then we would just stop reporting out the district rank altogether. Next slide, please. Benefits, like we said, uh, this, this would largely eliminate or cut down, or hopefully eliminate that manipulation of coursework, and students can, can really delve into those programs of study that may not have, um, AR classes, uh, and that the weighted GPA tied to it. Uh, we get to recognize more kids. And that's, and that third point I've already hit home, so it's losing out on opportunities of kids and programs losing some of their top performers. And then performers meaning students who, not, not meaning Fight Arts, I mean, all, all of the, uh, uh, programs, uh, CTE included. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, we did do some, um, research, uh, in, as far as Trailblazer. This was a topic of conversation at our Fall Trailblazer Principals Meeting. We're the only ones to still use valedictorian. Uh, every other school has gotten away from it. Uh, this would align more closely with, with what colleges do to honor their graduates. And then again, it would empower students to be able to take courses of choice and not be so laser-focused on that, because they would know, we wouldn't be moving the finish line on them. They would know from day one, if you hit four-point-oh, this, you're going to achieve this. There's no limit on the number of kids. You're not gonna get edged out by your peer. Uh, you're in control of earning that four-point-oh or above. As far as the metro districts, Westside, this is the last year, uh, starting in two thousand and twenty-five, they have moved to this system. Omaha Public, um, the only school that responded to me of the nine is Westview. They obviously don't have, haven't graduated a class yet, but they will utilize it when they have graduating classes. Every other district, um, has moved away from it, so I put either the system they go to and the year, if they provided it to me, the year they moved away. So, Millard's been off of it for ten years, Papio for seven, uh, Bellevue uses their, a different honoring system. They have a diploma and a diploma of distinction, but they don't name valedictorians. Bennington's been away for four years. Elcorn doesn't use it. They honor all kids with four-point-oh and above. DC West, top ten, and Grenden has gone away from it. And, next slide. Questions? That's a great, and this, uh, all these, those slides were created by Gipper. I, I'm addicted to it, and we just, uh, got it for graphics, and, um, I started playing with it, went down the rabbit hole and changed the entire eighth grade orientation PowerPoint that night, and I'm like, this is so much fun! So, anyway, that's a sidebar.
So, Ryan Pavanka's a nerd. That's, that's how to get you. So, you talk about honoring these kids at the ceremony if they're four-point-oh or above, that kind of thing. What does that look like?
Yeah, and that would be to be determined, so that we could create what that looks like, and we could look to, because what I don't, the answers I don't have are what would our, uh, metrics be? Uh, which, you know, so we would have to, um, dig deeper to, and just, and determine as a group what we wanted that to be and how they're honored. I mean, obviously, they would be acknowledged in the graduation program and as part of a ceremony, and have some sort of regalia that we give them, uh, at graduation, and an award at Senior Honors Night and things like that.
And perhaps something on their transcript.
For sure, yeah.
Would there still be like a senior speaker then during the actual ceremonies?
So, we brought that back recently, uh, anyway, so we do, if we do three valedictorians, we, that's too many speakers, I mean, three is, that's plenty. If we have two or one, we have afforded that opportunity to have a, a selected class speaker.
Yeah.
So, the last two, or if not three years, we've added that third speaker to give that, students that opportunity. And we've, uh, beefed up that process where they have to provide a written speech. We screen those, we select some of those to come in, uh, interview, and give us an excerpt of their speech so we can make sure that they, they're articulate and not, so.
So, there was something they said in there that I think was kind of important that kind of got a little glossed over, and I just wanna make sure that. So, the CTE programs they're talking about is the career training that we put so much effort into, and we don't have our top-performing kids in those because they aren't AP classes.
Right.
We've invested so much in this, and yet those kids are missing that mark there, which I think is a huge miss for us. The other part is that I have a kid that is in this top ten, right? That competitiveness can, can be an issue, right? So to pull that out of there and just let the kids enjoy being kids and take the classes that they love because they love them, I think is also something we shouldn't glaze over, so that's my two cents.
In the class that they enjoy, um, it's still gonna keep them in the game.
Yeah.
And they don't have to worry about getting five points for it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and it's a group of people, right? It's a group that works together to be in this group. It becomes more collective and collaborative and a join instead of an exclusion.
Great. Other questions, comments, board, things to think about?
I'm just, it sounds like.
I'm just, it sounds like, can you just explain a little bit more to, like, if you have a, a student that's really interested in Ivy League, right? And those kind of rankings are extremely important, those would all just still be in place and they just use those instead.
Yeah.
There's no way to get away from them, they're still there. It's still there, we're just not operating, and we're not recognizing those students against others.
Right.
At the last, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
So if the district ranking score doesn't mean anything anywhere else, it doesn't necessarily earn them any special place here, is the, is there something we in policy need to do to make that go away? What do we need to do with that?
You, from our understanding, you would have to change the current one.
So we'd, we'd have to change our policy, we just revisited that about, uh what, too many, uh too many ago. And then all our registration materials, all of that would have to change, um our graduation requirements. I don't know if valedictorians listed in there or not, but we'd have to go through all of our documents and materials and make sure that, you know, the um if we're trying for the current eighth grade class, um we did, we did wanna throw this out there to see if the board at least had an interest in making this change, if that's something we wanna do, it's gonna take four years for us to get all the way through the cycle anyway, so that'll give us plenty of time to review our materials and make sure that everything that the class of, what would be twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty eight, um would not um would, would be under a clear understanding that valedictorian is, is no longer a recognition we have here, instead it's, it's the Latin system, if that's the direction we end up going. But I think one of the things that we'll need to do, uh if we have next steps forward, uh and what I would like to see too is we don't have to necessarily reinvent the wheel with it to find out how other districts do it, what are their breakpoints? Is it four point two, is it four point oh, is it, you know, what are those things? A lot of this has already been thought out and vetted, and I think if we have that and we come back and bring that uh for what our plan is going forward and how we're gonna recognize those, I, I don't wanna speak for the board, but I think that would go a long way in convincing me that this would be the right direction for us to go.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then timeline, would we need to do that before school starts this next year?
We'd almost need to have it done before the handbooks are approved.
Right, mm-hmm.
So we'd be looking at, at probably June, that would wanna have it done.
Makes sense.
Is that, again, that isn't gonna affect our handbooks, that's one of the first pieces of documentation, there wasn't anything in the registration books this year, was there?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there was.
Yeah, but that's, yes, there is.
So that's something we have to, have to consider, if we need to wait five years or if we, or we can do it before.
Well, and I'm sure the district has thought about this as well, but communication to parents in the community, I think, is gonna be really important. This could be something that's seen as negative.
Right.
Um if you don't have the understanding and the reasoning as to why we're wanting to shift to this, I think it'd also be really important to know this, you know, in the metro area, there's X amount of, um, you know, schools that have shifted as well, so, again, just keeping in mind, just it'd be really important for us to communicate that.
And on the
Oh, go ahead.
The, looking at thi- this year's graduating class from semester where we pulled the valedictorians, uh there would have been twenty-four students with a four point oh or above that would have, would have honored um in, in a, in a larger way, so.
Do we have any idea if the other systems we use align with the other schools, are they something we also need to look at the way that we?
Are you talking about the other ranking systems?
Yes, the ranking systems.
The three ranking systems are official ranking systems, those are ranking systems that are used across the nation. So TMP, MPA, and combo are standard, those are ones that are accepted by all universities and standard ranking.
Okay.
Um it's just our convoluted with the ACT, TMP thing.
Okay.
And my follow-up question for that, is it somebody, the one that's, the, that's kind of the, the strange one, is that taking staff time? Like, a lot of staff time?
A little bit.
To calculate that, when there's already three existing ones? That just seems like, when resources are scarce, I'd rather not make somebody
And I, and I would say this, so the, the thing about that district ranking system that is really like redundant as well is that it's taken from the ACT scores, which are already honored. If a student has a high ACT score, they're already going to get that scholarship, they're already going to get that full scholarship to UNL, UNO, several other places, um recognized at Ivy Leagues, as you brought up, um it's in the Omaha World Herald already if they get a thirty or above. So to put it into a convoluted system that we've created to give somebody else another ranking, um just really seems more contrived than real.
And the colleges themselves are going away from ACT scores anyways, I think one of Jack's colleges actually asked for ACT scores. None of the rest of them, even one of them.
Right.
So I don't think that working that into our system really plays to anybody's favor.
And we only have one high school.
Right?
So I'm like, why are we making a district where we only have one?
Yeah.
High school, like, that would make sense, maybe, in like a multi-high school district.
Yeah, maybe. All right, other things we need to know about this, things you wanna tell us before we wrap up?
I think so. No, we appreciate you listening.
Yeah.
So we'll visit uh probably sometime in the next week or so, we'll come up with a plan to put together a proposal of what that would look like if we were gonna make that move away from valedictorian and, and we'll come back at a later date.
Yeah, because we would have to take some very clear board action on exactly what this looks like and that kind of thing, so I personally would lean towards the honoring more kids and being more inclusive, because that's who I am as a person. But, you know, let's, let's see where this, all this lays, right? Bring us a plan and let's, let's chat. All right, board, anything else you wanna ask?
I'm just curious as to the history of this, this uh policy or this student class rank system. Does anybody know?
Which one?
The one that we use, the district one?
Yeah, the district.
It was brought about in two thousand eight.
Let's, I'll visit with you.
Yeah, let him visit with you about it.
That's a rabbit hole we don't wanna run down right now, girl.
Okay.
At the time, it probably made a lot of sense.
Right? All right, we'll revisit, how's that sound? Okay, well, we super appreciate this and you gave us a lot to think about and, yeah, I'm into it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. All right, district bond project update.
Okay, um a lot going on in the area of construction, of course, the focus mostly is on uh two buildings at this point, but we're, we're really starting to gain some momentum here for Seymour and, and the middle school. Um at Mockingbird, uh quite a bit of work is going on there, uh we've got quite a bit of drywalls already in place. Inspections have been passed on the majority of the main floor and the lower floor, um so we're starting to see walls get sealed up. Uh so that's exciting to see, we can kinda see everything starting to frame itself together and put in. Uh they've got a power pool set, that means we'll have permanent power in there, uh hopefully within the next, next week or so, a transformer's already down there on property. Uh and of course, the conduit's all laid, so they just have to pull that line through. Once they get that in, that's a major step because that allows them then to start uh working on commissioning the uh rooftop units and the boilers. Once they get that part up, then we'll have permanent heat inside the building. Um for those that have been through there, it's not bad right now, it's probably forty-five, fifty degrees. Um but being able to have permanent, um permanent stuff running in there, that would be something that, that would be our preference here going forward. Um other things of note, fire and, and alarm and sprinkler works taking place, uh they are getting ready to set some ceiling grid in some of those finished off areas. Those, again, that have been through, you've seen areas that are already um painted. Um so they've got uh crime and paint up on the walls, uh and they're really moving along. They've got quite a bit of tile work done for all the restrooms too, um so that's starting to shape up and uh starting to look like someday it might be a school, so we're excited about uh that direction. Yeah. Uh Bloomfield, um they've got most of the demo done, that's down to maybe four or five percent left to go. They're starting to work on concrete stuff outside the building, so there is, uh if you've ever been around that building, there's asphalt that kinda rings the building. A lot of that's cracked and, and in bad shape, you have to have egress from any spot in the building out to the front or to the main um parking lot. So they're gonna tear that out and do a lot of that replacement work while the weather is still as nice as where it is now. Um they have uh gotten and passed some inspections on the old primary wing, so that is in a, in a spot now where they're getting ready to uh go ahead and, and do some drywall work in there as well. Um so it, it'll be a little bit of a race to see which building finishes up first. Uh my suspicions are of me Mockingbird, at least from the interior, but the site superintendent Bloomfield is the one who did Meadows and also worked a little bit at Wildwood, and he's a, he's a heart charger, so we'll see, uh we'll see where that ends up. Uh roof curbs are here, that, why that's important, those are the pieces that the rooftop units sit on. Um so now that they've got those curbs here, they can start taking the old equipment off of the building, putting the roof curbs in place and then setting the new equipment back on top. Um so we're, we're about to get a lot more efficient in that building as that stuff from the late nineties uh gets taken out and gets replaced with new units up there. Um and let's see, and then Seymour Middle School, working on staging and mobilization in those. Um I've got something that I, I wanna bring up before the board here, um we've had a proposal from our construction company on a different approach to middle school than what we've used in our other buildings. Um so I'll get to that here in a minute, but it's gonna involve some phasing work that takes place um during the course of school year. And then uh Wildwood, uh we had our fire, fire marshal come out today, uh and they have a couple more things to do, but they're gonna pass that inspection next time it comes up. All right, so alluding to uh Ralston Middle School, one of the things I wanna look at here, this is a proposal uh that we had from uh Whites about a different approach, a different way that we would look at um we would look at trying to go through and uh complete that building. So what you see here uh is a map of the building itself, I've got a bunch. Areas that are in that orange color are ones that would not be done until the summer of twenty-five. Areas that are in uh green and blue, those are ones that would be done uh over the course of the summer. So this first green that you have up in front right now, just as a frame of reference, this is the lower level. So we would not have any work that's there in place uh in that section of first summer. This is the second floor, so that's your, your eighth grade wing, uh essentially. So as you can see on there with the green and the blue colors, that second floor uh would, would basically be done um over the course of the summer. Now, by done, that doesn't mean entirely complete, so let me give you an idea of what that means. Means that they would go in, they would replace the ceiling pads, uh they would paint the walls, they would install the technology in those classrooms, and they would do the flooring in those classrooms and the lighting uh in there as well. What that would be remaining then, or what's left to go in those classrooms would be the installation of the new network cabling, okay? So we're planning on run, running the cabling, but we're really, um, well, we're just not gonna do this. We don't wanna try and run two separate systems uh for different parts of the building, I think we, we'd be headed for trouble if we tried to do that. We had two separate intercoms, we had two separate networks, it's just not something that um is a good idea. So as they tear those ceilings apart and they, and they run the cabling, they're just gonna leave the cabling up there, leave it coiled, and then they'll come back in the summer twenty-five and they'll, they'll work on installing that for a permanent install, okay? So that's the second floor and bottom floor, uh where we run into uh a little bit different of a plan. This area in dark blue is the front entryway, and that's where the bulk of the construction takes place uh with this project. They're looking at trying to get that done uh over the course of the summer as well. And then the areas in red uh would be the same treatments as we talked about for the second floor. So again, that would be uh pretty much everything except for your network cabling would take place in those areas in red. That's a, a, a pretty aggressive schedule, pretty aggressive summer, if they can, they can get to that point uh where that much work gets done, uh that would, that would put us well on our way uh to being able to wrap this project up in the summer twenty-five. The other colors you see on there, uh the lavender, the green, the yellow, and the purple, um their proposal is to come forward and to take four classrooms at a time and to complete some of this work during the course of the fall semester, okay? So for example, if we start off in the upper corner there where the lavender is, uh we would essentially come in, they would build walls temporary here, temporary here, isolate that section of the building, and then they would go through and they would, they would do the construction work in there. The good part is, most of the work that has to be done isn't what you would call a really loud, really dirty, really noisy construction. The only exception to that would be when they have to grind the floors. And what we'll try and get done when we do that is to have them do that on off times, either at nights or try and do them on weekends or try and do them um or try and do them during breaks, that would be when that grinding piece of it takes place. The rest of it, as far as replacing lights, it's really pretty clean and pretty quiet work. As far as installing boards, as far as putting ceiling pads in, those are things that I think we can get done without a tremendous amount of disruption. So now you say to yourself, well, where are those four classrooms gonna go? How are we gonna do that? We've already worked on a plan uh to some extent of how we can convert this large computer lab into two classrooms. That classroom's empty uh to begin with, so we've already got three out of four of them figured out. Um so we'd have to figure out where that fourth classroom would go, but everybody that has to move would have a semi-permanent place to be, it's not like they would have to travel from period to period and go to other classrooms in order, in order to be able to teach a class. So once that section then in purple, oh, and the arrows indicate where they would enter and exit uh the building, so in this case, we'll put those walls up here and here, they're all coming out of that door, okay? And that's the outside here, uh on the east end of the building. So once that gets done then, it simply moves from purple to green to yellow, um to other purple, uh and then that would be finished out sometime right around Christmas. So that's the proposal that they have, there, there's a lot to like about this and there's some to not like. The stuff that, that I like most about this just puts us on schedule and allows us to finish up in the summer twenty-five, okay? There also is a pretty substantial cost savings, and what you see tonight with the GMP that we have, that guaranteed maximum price, guaranteed maximum price that we have coming out, uh reflects the cost savings that we would see. Why this is a savings for us, instead of having them do it in ten weeks over summer twenty-four and ten weeks over summer twenty-five, those people are all gonna leave, they have to go and work, they have to be, they're gonna be on other job sites. This would allow us to keep several different trades working at Ralston uh and continuing all, all the way through the month of December. Pretty much the ones that we've seen, particularly our people from Whites, we really like, we wanna keep them on the rest of our projects. This would allow us to keep them employed, keep them here at Ralston so they don't go off to other jobs. The other thing that we see is a pretty substantial cost savings in being able to do this work over the course of that fall semester. Quite honestly, it ended up being about three hundred thousand dollars uh in cost difference on a five million dollar project. So it is substantial, it is real, um and it is something that, um, you know, I, I would recommend that we take a good, strong look at uh and, you know, consider that uh in going forward. Now, what's not to like about it? We have not had really any construction other than punch list things, uh items going on while we've had kids in the building. Our history in the past, we, we've done entire buildings with students still in the one, that is not ideal, that's something that we really uh wanna try and avoid. But I think the ability to come in and section off uh so that we don't have a whole lot of disruption or interaction between construction workers and uh students, I think it's something that, and because of the scope and the nature of the work we have, um you know, they're not running a lot of power saws, they're not running a whole lot of really lot of equipment, I think it's something that we can do and uh maybe pretty successful. I've only shared this out uh with the principal and his assistant principal over there, he's very excited about it, he wants to get started on it, he wants to, uh he said, yeah, whatever you need, we'll, we'll, we'll get it done, so, they're really motivated to get started with this. Uh and I, again, the ones are gonna put up with the inconvenience of it and our students, um but it's something I, I think that uh we should strongly consider. So I've shared this out with the building and grounds committee and with uh President Richards, um but I wanna make sure the other three were aware of this and if you had any, any really big misgivings about us going forward with this plan, please let me know and we can, we can try and pivot to something else. If not, it'd be my recommendation that we go forward with, with this plan as we have. So are, are there questions or things that you, you guys have about uh what you see on here and about, um, you know, what, what we're gonna try and accomplish at Ralston Middle?
Jason, if they're in the yellow zone, the construction is going on?
That's the worst one, so what we look at is probably that courtyard right out here in the hallway.
Students in the purple area still, so they have to go through.
Well, so what we could end up doing, there is an outside access here, you could look at trying to go California style and have it outdoor hallway where they come out, but that's not always gonna work in Nebraska, we know that's an issue, uh where if it's really cold, it's gonna have to be something that
Couldn't they just do that one first?
They could, certainly could.
Get done in the early fall?
So when, when it's done, then we'll still run in the same issue, although they could do the yellow one.
Yeah, do the yellow one first, and then
I, I think that's open, I, I don't, I don't think that any of those other colors other than red and, and and that dark blue have to be in any particular order.
No.
So, okay, I'll bring that up as a suggestion.
Although I was gonna say, if you want help creating an outdoor classroom for your fourth classroom space, we could also help you. Toughen up these Nebraska kids, I know, I mean, you could look at it all throughout the space in the middle, I'm like, right there is called outdoor classrooms.
Then you're gonna see increased uh student outcome for that, for that next term.
So this'll, this'll be a part of, oh, let me show you the rest of the two then, um and this is, is something we're also trying to get done, these are the parking lots, the construction to be replaced there, so this is the upper lot, all that sidewalk along that main entry, and then what I would call the middle lot, um in between them, the lower lot, we replaced about twelve, thirteen years ago. So that's still in pretty decent shape down there. Um so all that parking then, you see a section in orange there, that was drawn up when we thought that uh we were gonna run our JV basketball leaves out of middle school. They've already secured another location, so I think we can do the entire parking lot, uh well, at least the section we'll replace it uh and that won't, that won't, that won't start school too. But very aggressive schedule, um a lot of things have to go right in order for us to do it, quite honestly, this is, is kind of uh as we look forward to our make or break summer, uh when you look at the amount of work that has to take place in Mockingbird and where to get that. When you look at the amount of work that has to take place in Mockingbird and where to get that one up and going, the amount of work that takes place here. Seymour, we got a little bit of relief on by moving over to the west side. But those are our two projects that, you know, if we have a really, really wet summer, we might have a little bit of trouble.
How did Seymour crowd take the news about the.
They're okay with it, I mean, they're, you know, it's a choice between that or putting up with construction and having part of the building that wouldn't be done until the next summer. They're troopers, they're gonna do it. And it's what a great reason to throw stuff away.
Oh, no superintendent Buckingham does.
Okay, questions then for those three that haven't seen it until tonight with their phasing plan?
It's quite a time we were talking about doing something with the fields at the middle school. Is that soccer fields?
So what we ended up with Liz, and that's a great question. Just preface for those that weren't around with it, the city sold their soccer fields, so we ended up picking up Ralston Soccer, which they've used our facilities. When we went ahead and we put that all weather turf in there, that's where they wanted to be. So they're gonna be able to work in particularly during their spring season. And we'll have soccer bowls on the softball side already because they don't play during that season. When we're not practicing on that field, we're more welcome to use that one. No, all of the high school.
So we're not doing anything with middle school?
My guess is that once they get up there, they're gonna wanna be up there, they're gonna be on it full-time. But they offer so open to them that if they wanna use our middle school grass, they'll be certain. Yeah, we talked about that and about insulation turf, and once we got that project going up to the high school, I think that's gonna meet quite a few of our needs of our different backgrounds. They also use meadows, and they really liked it because it was their own. They didn't have to schedule around other people, they just had their goals out there and they could play in time and another time. But it's been, I'm glad that we could come in and we could step up and help. Which we'll do with Rabat too and maybe RGS A, Ralston Girl Soccer Association. Alright, questions on the phasing part of it then? Alright, next thing then that we've got, and this, of course, shared out with our Building and Grounds Committee. But also, if you wanna, and I gotta keep reminding myself, I'd like to do, you know, once a month to bring that expenditure tracker back to you. Just so everybody's aware of where we sit. Contingent on passion or GMP with the middle school tonight, that's kind of a big step too because that allows us then to go forward and say, how much money do we have left for the renovations at Ralston High School? So up to this point, everything's been okay, this is budget, we wanna try and stay with it, but how much money are we gonna have left at the end? And that gives us, or gives me a pretty good idea then of how much money we've got, how much we can spend on renovations. And, you know, how much of the projects that we talked about initially, how much of that stuff can we take on? So we're starting to get more and more clarity towards the end game with this and what that scope of work will look like. So there's the expenditure tracker on there, and you see some of them, we're sitting in pretty good shape. We're gonna be a little bit over on Wildwood, of course, we know that we're gonna be way over on Mockingbird. But the rest of them are coming in at. Okay. And then last thing I have for you, something we need to talk about is dedication plaques. So as we get around closer to the time when we're gonna put those things in, you know, there's a variety of different directions that we can go, style, we can go with it. What you have here is a rendering from our architect. This is pretty close to the brushed aluminum that you see up at Ralston High School. So as you walk in the front doors, if you look over to the right by the art rooms, you'll see the dedication plaque there. This is a rendering that's on there. Now, before you say, well, why do we have those people on there, they're not the board members that are current? The way our policy reads right now is board members and superintendent that were in office at the time the contract was signed. So if there's a desire for the board to change that, we can. I just had them do this rendering based on current policy. But that's how it reads right now, and that's the rendering you see in front of you. The other question I had as we look at this is, do we wanna look at doing dedication plaques in the buildings we've done massive renovations on? So when we look at Meadows, for example, Wildwood and Bloomfield, those would be the three that would come to mind, that there was some pretty significant work done in each of those. The plaque came down for Meadows when they were doing that renovation. We've got the original still. Do we wanna put the originals back up, or do we wanna look at doing something that's refreshed, a little bit newer, a little bit more modern, like what you see in front of you here? And I apologize, this wasn't out Friday, I just got this today.
I know, everybody get all crazy.
And it's okay too, if this looks fine, if this is the direction we wanna go, that's great. I'll go ahead and tell them and we'll go ahead and get started with it.
Can we rehang the ones and add our new ones? Because I really feel bad like not honoring the history while adding two, you know what I mean?
And I'm not so sure that they're up in every building anyway. I know Meadows is because I tried to pick that one up and it's about forty pounds. It's one of those really heavy bronze ones, so that one's not going anywhere. But they're, yeah, I mean, certainly if they're still in place, I know the middle school still has one, and we've got one in this building. High school, the original one, I think is probably lost to history.
I don't know that I've ever seen it.
Yeah, I don't know that I have either.
My first year of teaching, I mean, it would've been two thousand and three, the one I really know is the one that's there.
So that one is there. Mockingbirds, I don't know how we feel about that, if we just wanna go with a brand new one because it is a brand new building. But there is a plaque in that building too at the front, and we'll salvage that, I just don't know what we're gonna do with it. So things to consider, we don't have to have an answer on this. Of course, some of those buildings are already done, they can be added on later. But the one for Mockingbird, if we wanna have that as part of the dedication, we probably need to make a decision sometime fairly soon that this is what we like, or we wanna go in a different direction. And if that's the case, please let me know that, and then we can explore some different options. And they'll make them out of acrylic, they'll make them out of glass, I mean, there's really a bunch of different directions you can go with it.
Anybody have straw cables?
For Mockingbird's old plaque, is it possible to put it inside with a picture of the old building?
Yeah, there's, so one of the things that you'll see when you go through and those have been through, there's a lot of storage, or excuse me, a lot of display case area in there. There's one by the art room, then there's a huge one down by the gymnasium. So I think that would be a pretty neat place for that to reside. So certainly we can take that out. Good idea, thank you.
So then as we get different buildings done and things, the board members will change because it's when we sign the contracts with the people, right? Okay, just making sure.
That's the way the policy's written.
Yep.
Yeah. I couldn't remember exactly. You're gonna be so confused one day tonight, twenty twenty-four. Who was the superintendent?
We're very confused.
That is.
That seems very confusing.
It's very confusing.
Well, and you've gotta have a cutoff for it at some point, I mean, things change, people enter and leave office. You have superintendents that change over too, so it's good that policy's defended on that, it goes pretty clear in line.
I'm actually gonna ask why Mockingbird's, or why Mockingbird's thing is a runner.
Not a Mockingbird?
Oh. Not a Mockingbird. This is another random thing that will confuse us forever.
Cloud tradition.
Okay.
Finish it, guys, you gotta stick to.
Alright.
Is this, is the language, the verbiage, is this what we wanna see on it? Are there any other input, or can we go forward with it?
That's nice.
I think it does, I think it looks nice.
I don't really have any opinions about what it's made out of or anything, but.
I can see if you wanna see a rendering of one, I can see what the acrylic looks like. So, okay.
Acrylic, it would depend on what it's, while it's going on. As someone who recently worked with the school that just did theirs on all acrylic, but it's on a beautiful, they had to think about what color the wall was, they had to repaint their wall. Because it was on a white wall, it was written in white, and you couldn't see it. So they had to repaint the wall behind the giant acrylic plaque that they spent a lot of money on, so. Just depends on what's going on.
Little things you don't think of. Okay, so, any other district bond project update items before we keep rolling here?
No.
Alright, I believe that takes us to our foundation update.
Alright, so our foundation met on Tuesday the sixth. And I hope any should have a copy of the agenda and then also a flyer. So the flyer is, well, the meeting started with a tour of Wildwood. So the foundation group has already been through, our board has already been through Meadows to see the final version there, and also now Wildwood. So they really appreciated, I think, being in the building and seeing all the projects completed. Top of the agenda was also the Alumni Distinguished Alumni Award and celebration that will come along with that. So, and I think, Robin, you are on that committee, I believe? So anything you wanna add on that?
Uh, not at this time, we're still gonna meet again in February. Right now, we've just kind of collected all the people and make sure that we're all in the boat.
Okay.
We're gonna decide which direction to face the boat next.
So the idea behind that is to celebrate the achievements of those who've been instrumental to Ralston High School and Ralston Public Schools and the Ralston Schools Foundation. So they're going to establish a Ralston High School Distinguished Alumni Award. And so there's a committee put together for that, and there'll be an event in October with the dinner to honor the recipient. There's also athletic sponsorship opportunities, and they chose ten businesses purchased sponsorships. So those will be the banners that will hang in the sports complex, so behind the baseball and softball fields, and also the football field, right? So those businesses are our own, the Kumru's Business Prime Auto, so thank you. SOS Heating and Air, Day Spring Bank, Don and Seventy Second, Grandell Construction, Hy-Vee. The Whites Company, Construction Company, Raising Cane's, First Interstate Bank, Pinnacle Bank, Runza, BCDM Architects, and the Ralston Schools Foundation. And then a banner sponsor was Don and Ron's Car Star Collision Company in downtown Ralston. Nice to see the community coming together and sponsoring our, so thank you for all those efforts. We went over financials for the foundation, talked about tiny rams and little rams grant applications, so that was pretty exciting. They have technology grants, eleven thousand, I believe? So, pretty neat. They don't have very many openings as far as positions go, so one tiny ram's position open and three little rams. So if you, I think they shared that on social media, so if you wanna share those out, they're looking for people to fill those positions. And our next meeting at Bloomfield, didn't they?
You can't watch her at that point.
Yes, yeah, at that point it'll be close, right?
I hope so. Not worth trouble. It'll be after school gets out, but I'm hoping the building's mostly done. And by then, I mean, almost all of it finished before we, I don't see any advantage to us shutting the year down, we've already done that once to them, so they need to finish out.
Have they ever talked about, do they know what sub up to quality is for that grant? Have they talked about sub up to quality before?
What quality?
Sub up to quality, what that grant was for, with tiny rams?
It was a technology grant that they had for different.
I was just speaking to what sub up to quality is. Does the board, has the board heard of that before?
We've mentioned it, but we haven't really gotten into it.
Can I mention it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just, so sub up to quality is the Quality Rating Improvement System for Early Childhood Programs. It's, individual states have their own system, but pretty much every state in the country has one. And our tiny ram is a four out of five, which is highly, that's really good. They did a really good job.
Step up to quality?
Step up to quality, yes, yeah.
Sorry, you can talk really fast.
Sorry, sorry, eligible, yeah. So, yes, so step up to quali, yeah, so what they, so only, sorry. So only programs that are in that high quality rating system are eligible for extra grant funding. So they, so it was, yeah, but that's a big deal, so that's just for tiny rams. I mean, a four out of five in that rating system is, there are very, there are not a lot of programs that have received those ratings, so.
That's good to know.
That's good to have, yes, yeah, so, yeah, it's like, yeah, that's good.
Thank you for our little tiny ram, little ram people. Knocking it out there, we have no idea.
Yes.
Alright, cool. Alrighty.
You know, I was walking through on our tour to at Mockingbird, it was really nice to see in our little rams program, high school alumni, right? Working in those programs, and I happen to know a couple of them that are studying to be teachers as well. So, you know, it's a good milestone for them to work in those programs.
Yeah.
It's great. Alrighty, does that wrap up the foundation update?
It does.
Jason, did you have anything to add?
I think you got it. So you do have those handouts in front of you, so if you wanted to see what businesses were beyond the top ten, Jim's done a pretty good job of getting those all gathered up and put together. One of the things I think we'll see here over the next year, we're gonna have some requirements, well, our requirements strongly suggest that our subcontractors also get into that. So we'll have, I wouldn't say an endless supply, but we're gonna have a lot of people that I think are gonna succumb to Jim's influences.
Mary, if I could just thank you for the updates, because I know this is an area that I constantly ask questions about. It probably seems like I'm challenging that, but I wanna know how we engage in the community, are they supporting the district and the schools, and where's that funding going? So this is really great, I appreciate this, thank you.
Yeah, I love this addition to the agenda.
Yeah, and they do support a lot of the student activities and things, so, yeah. I know, because we've got prom coming up and things like that, that they'll end up supporting.
And those banner sponsorships are still available. So the top ten is sold out, but the banner sponsors, you know, still gonna go before the spring season starts, we got three weeks.
Wide listening audience, you can still invest.
You know, or anybody listening, yeah, those thousand dollar sponsorships are still available and you get quite the visibility for those.
That's the Jim influence that we're talking about right there. So you know to that, yeah.
We always knew you were a Jedi, huh? You're not the droid, you're a nice commercial right there. Alright, I think that this makes it Aaron's.
Yeah, financial highlights for the month. We had a pretty balanced budget this month, our receipts were pretty close to our dispersments for the month. The numbers at the bottom, the balances can seem a little alarming. Keep in mind that that balance for our month did go up by four hundred thousand, so we're still ahead of where we were from last month. We're pretty far off where we were last year, but if we actually go back two years to twenty twenty-two, we only had one point three million in the book balance that year. So over the course of the two years, we've gone up about double of what we had, over double of what we had in the region, so. Next page for me, please. The other thing I wanna point out on this page is that local district taxes. Last month, we had about seven percent of our year budget come in, had to come in by that point. So we went up by ten percent in just one month. And again, that's just that reminder to the board, a lot of times those receipts don't come in in consistent manners, and we'll see that go up and down, up and down. You'll see across the two years, there's some differences in those numbers, but again, at the bottom, if you look at where we're at for budgeted receipts, we're sitting at about twenty-five percent, which was consistent with last year. If we were going by just every month being the same, we'd be at about forty-one, forty-two percent. So again, they don't come in as regularly as our bills do, unfortunately. Down at our bills and the dispersment side of things, you'll see, we had quite a change in our staff services, which I pulled from what goes into that. And that comes a lot from Dr. Harley's work, so things like Iberry Professional Development, things like that. Which makes sense, because every time I see Dr. Harley, she's wanting to show me something that we could possibly get involved in, but. Lots of great work coming out of her department, and we've had a lot of people going to professional development, engaging in those type of things this last month or so, so.
I guess we'll keep paying those bills then.
If you look down at the bottom of those dispersments though, we're right on where we were from last year, and we're still below the forty-one percent that would be if we're in, every month was the same, so. On the next page for bonds, Buckingham explained where that's going. I will share one story when we were in Mockingbird, Jim and I counted, I think, four or five different trades on one floor and doing stuff all at once. So that money is certainly being put to use and it's pretty exciting to give you those jobs there, so. For the next one, for the lunch one was the one I wanted to point out. The lunch one's gonna seem, again, like we went two steps back, we actually kinda went two months back. And so we ended up doubling up our payments to Sodexo again because the board meeting was delayed. So we were actually able to get in some additional bills that we kind of all put into the one. So we were actually able to get in some additional bills that we kind of all put into the one month. So that's why that number looks high for the supply side, if we actually go back and look at last year's, that number was zero, because we didn't get those bills paid, or they didn't come in, that's kind of schedule. So that's why that one seems a little bit different comparatively to what we've seen. On the next page, the depreciation fund, I want to point out, that is the plow that goes on the truck. So we now have the plow on the truck, Jim and I have named the trucks, and it felt like spring today, so you're welcome. We didn't make the warm weather come, but it is ready, and it is ready and named for whenever it gets put to use, whether that's now or next year, so.
We have to reuse those golds by the end.
Maybe they should always do the naming then after the big snowstorm.
February, yeah, January, good time. Uh, let's see, four, so this is something new, I'm gonna, you guys will have to keep me up on, and make sure I keep doing this. I, I go through activity funds pretty regularly, I get bills every single week that I go through, and so I just wanted to pull a few of the exciting things that I see come across my desk, because finances do tell a story to those of us that look at bills over and over and over, so. Cheer competition was real big in activity funds, we had some judges be paid out of there quite a bit. Wrestling, obviously, we talked about that already, that was kind of, had some bills come through. We had soccer bill shows up, that mean, that to me is a change of the seasons, when I start to see soccer and baseball and those start to get picked up, that means the seasons are changing. And the other one was, there was a livestock contest. So we paid the, uh, the activity for that.
So that's a new experience.
Chicken somewhere.
No, we haven't gotten that part.
Probably animal judging or something like.
Or FFA has a few animals, not a lot.
Yeah.
Cool.
Rabbits.
Rabbits.
Alright, I'm pushing for a baby goat if we ever.
Yes.
Those are the ones you see in activity, you don't see those in general funds.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
Get enough goats, we won't have to pay for the.
Mover.
Take care of it.
If you wouldn't mind also maybe next meeting, kind of talking us through the process when somebody needs to put in a request for each of these set activities?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Other questions?
Anybody else want to get deep into finances? Alright, I guess we will hop into government relations.
I'm gonna take the place of Joe, so pretend I'm Joe tonight.
I got you.
Joe.
Even though he's, I think he's gonna be here next week, right?
Right.
Two weeks.
Jason and I kind of talked and said, we'll just kind of share an overview, the education committee is extremely busy. They have very packed agendas, Mondays and Tuesdays. I think Jason said it best, I think it was last week or the week prior, where he just said, can't they just get together and come to agreement and produce one bill? Because they produce about four or five on the same topic. So I told Jason when we were talking about this, what I would do is I'll just pull out kind of the highlights, there's gonna be onesie twosies that are outside of these categories, but these are the ones that we're hearing most at the hearings. There's a lot around teacher recruitment and retention, we've seen it on both sides, we've seen it for our veteran teachers, but then also how do we attract more educators? And that's everything from grants and tuition waivers and all, all kinds of different ways of trying to attract them. That's especially true when we talk about special education and school psychologists, so those are two specific areas that there's bills geared towards trying to increase recruiting around them. There's some security measures that are coming through, there's the one, of course, that allows boards to allow additional people to carry firearms within the buildings. But then there's also one that allows school districts to take out that QCPU funding to increase security measures that were put into our schools, like cameras and secure entrances and things like that, so. There's limits to spending as well as limitations on bond elections, you're seeing kind of that controlling those mechanisms that the board has had in the past. And then there's also discussion about kind of how do we get some money towards students who aren't enrolled in private schools? So that's been introduced in different fashions. And then the ones that are coming out in the next couple of weeks, there's a couple of different reading bills. So today, they've heard one on dyslexia, and then there was a couple additional ones that are gonna come out in regards to support for reading at the state level, so.
Alright.
So I have one thing here, I'm sorry, I'm not quite ready yet. For our legislative committee, we shared this out, we, we received a, a document from the chief financial officer at Omaha Public Schools. And why this is significant, I, I don't know, in your travels, if you run across people that have, have spoken to governor or heard some of the agenda or the narrative that's been spread that all these boards, all they did was pass additional budget authority, and they're just, they're continuing to tax and spend at an out of control rate. So, again, Shane Ryan over at, at Omaha Public Schools did yeoman's work on this, or he and his staff did yeoman's work on putting together this information, which again, we shared out in our legislative committee, but I thought, if you don't mind, I'd just take a minute to explain.
I do not one bitch, you feel free to spread this all around.
What this is, is as we look at a total property tax authority allowed, okay? So if you look at over, in the big picture, you have 2.8 billion dollars, base authority was 2.7 million. So that means out of that entire amount, there's, that entire amount, only about 128 million of the entire state came from board-approved overrides that we had. And just a reminder again, our board approved that flexibility, but we did not utilize any of that additional budget authority. It is something in current statute that we're able to carry over from year to year, so that part sits there. And we see then, in this chart also, there's 2.7 billion from the base authority, base and overrides, and then here's the actual request. So the actual request then, as you can see, is 2.73 billion, it's, it's really not much over what that base amount was. So if we look at it this way then, districts approved to exceed tax authority. So out of the state, 244 districts in the state, 188 did the same, or 187 did the same thing we did here at Ralston. They approved that over that ability to exceed what the statutory amount was, 56 of them elected not to, okay? So that really is the, the figure that is most often quoted, is that we had 188 of 244 districts that gave the system that went ahead and they, and they, our, our continued attacks, even though the state gave a higher amount of reimbursement through special education and through foundation aid. Well, if we look down a couple of slides, or a couple of charts here, this is the real number. And why I bring this up, so districts with unused board increase, this is where we sit also. So out of those 188 districts that went ahead and approved to exceed, only 19 of them did so.
It's really just a safety net because of the unknown of what the next, you know, couple of years will bring, right? So, you know, I, I thought it was a, a good choice, or a good decision that we made.
Clearly, every board agrees with us.
I was in conversation with the district that did not, and they're quite nervous about some of the policy that's being introduced, because it's, they're almost gonna get punished double time, because they didn't take out that cautionary.
So, as you go through then, that, that really is, is the data point, I think, that, again, really flies in the face of the narrative that school districts are out of control. If you look at, at the total number you had, you take the 56 who did, did not approve it, and you add in the 169 that did not take advantage of that. We were talking about only 19 districts that are over what, what that amount was. So it really is a very small number, it really is a very small percentage. So to me, the plan that they put in place, and our district was a prime example of this, we went ahead and, and we could have levied more than what we did this year. We really did try and offer out some tax relief, which I think we, we accomplished to our taxpayers, and we, that was supplemented, or supplanted, I guess you'd say, by those dollars that we have coming, coming in from state revenue. So, that being the case, again, if, if the conversation comes up or presents itself, we've got anybody, any senators that, that want to listen to this, I think this really shows them that, you know, in good faith, the school districts really tried to hold the line on this this year, and that's where, where, where proof is. Now, these numbers come directly from what's called the LC2 form, which is our budget form that we file once our budget is, is approved by our board. So these are real figures, okay, and these are real tax levies that are on here, so this isn't a manipulation or game that anybody's playing, this is, is what actually was turned in the state.
Can you scroll down, Jason, to show where it, so districts with reduced general levies, 215 or 88%. So, you know, that's the real number, I think, for the state, right, that, that tells the story.
Yeah, 100%.
You know?
We all voted to protect ourselves, but we didn't use it unless we absolutely had to. And I would love to know how many of that 19 districts weren't meeting their budget to start with, if they needed every single penny of that to survive.
Anyway, I thought, thought I'd bring that up, that is something we shared out, and.
I love a good graphic people.
Our, our plan is.
I really am, I'm such a nerd, it's okay.
Our plan is to have the creator of this, go ahead and write up a narrative, so that as it's distributed to senators, and that's what our goal is, is to hand, put this in the hands of every senator that we have, that there's an explanation of what these, these figures represent. It isn't necessarily a, you know, the, what you're saying is wrong, but it is, I think, a more accurate depiction of the, the figures that should be used instead of 100 in so many districts went ahead and approved to, to spend more money.
Right.
Approving it and doing it are two different things, and that's what this shows you is who's actually doing it. Anyway, thought I'd bring that up.
Probably wouldn't hurt to make a phone call to our senators to make sure that they've heard this information.
Yep, yep, he, he is on the agenda.
Good, excellent.
Okay, sorry, sidetracked a little bit.
Don't like sidetrack. Erin, are you all wrapped up with the financial stuff?
Questions?
Relations? Any other items we want to ask Erin about before we roll into? Let's be updates. Ms. Kumru, take it away.
Well, you know, you've got your, your board notes in the agenda. They are working on developing the new school leaders and law conference that will be held in June in Kearney. And they need ideas for legal and general sessions.
AI.
Yeah.
AI, yeah, that's a good one. Anything else?
Which, which conference, Liz?
The law. School Leaders and Law Conference.
I, I was thinking about this and I would ask the board before we did it, we was kicking around the idea for the statewide convention next year, maybe partnering with our attorney and doing a, a presentation on CMR in the process.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
For those, I think, Mary and Liz, you were the two that went out with us to Kearney.
Yeah.
When we heard another district and another attorney talk about it, and I, I don't know if it's giving back or not, but our experience has been very positive with it, so.
Yeah, that's what.
That'd be wonderful.
About it, yeah.
So we, we may pursue doing that at the fall conference.
So what about AI? Have you seen in the classroom?
Policy and AI.
Yeah, it's, yeah, policy, yeah.
Policy.
Yeah, I feel like that's gonna be a hot topic for a long time. Alright, anything else?
Let me know. Need to send some, their ideas to, ideas to them by Friday.
Alright. Can we wrap up then, or we?
That's it.
Really, alright. Enrollment update. We're leaving all quiet over there.
I know, and I have one whole sentence to share with you.
Oh, goody.
We're on track.
Looks pretty much the same, doesn't it? Yep, I never really, it's, I'm too exciting, I tried to zhuzh it up, like, you know, Erin tried to zhuzh up his financial report, and there's not a lot I can zhuzh.
Each got one laugh, you're good.
Check that box out, yeah. We're basically where we were a year ago, where overall, we have 53 more students than we did a year ago.
Not too bad. Concentrated in any building or kind of all over the place?
No, it's kind of all over, the, the grade level that has, has grown the most is just kind of trivia, but it's third grade. Our third grade is, has grown the most over the past year.
You want to speak a little bit about progress we made on the Kearney Western?
Yeah.
Ooh, yeah.
So, we've been grappling with what to do with Kearney Western having some one section, some two section, and what do you do when you have that bubble and you have restricted footprint and restricted FTEs? I don't ask, I don't ask Erin for that much stuff, I ask for more people. Really. And so, talking with, with Buck and with Andrew Mather and try, like, throwing different things at the wall and seeing, how are we gonna make this work?
Yeah.
And our options truly, are, none of them are really super great. It's moving teachers around, or it's moving kids around, or it's repositioning people from one building to another, and it's, it's life-changing no matter what. But Andrew did such a great job, he brought together his third grade team and his fourth grade team and shared with them, these are some of our options, here's what, what our challenges are. And they really crafted a, a really doable solution, not long-term. We, it will get us through another year. But Erin and Jason both know that that's gonna be something that we have to really, like, we knew that we were going to need another FTE at Seymour this year. I think that's probably what we need to be looking at for Kearney Western to add another teacher, but they came up with a good plan for, for one year, which is moving our two sections of second grade into one section of third grade, instead of two sections of third grade into one section of fourth grade. It would have been about 34 kids in one classroom if we moved our two sections of third into one fourth. And right now, it's, I believe, as of today, if nothing were to change, and correct me if I'm wrong, Buck, but I believe that it would, if we move our two sections of second into one third, it'd be 29 kids, which is still a lot, but it's not 34. Buck and Erin have, have agreed to put a full-time para in that classroom, which is going to be hugely helpful. I can speak from experience that, as a principal, I had one third grade, or sorry, second grade with 30 kids. And our, our central office at the time blessed us with a full-time para, which made all the difference in the world. The reading specialist is going to help with CKLA instruction in that large classroom. And so we did not have to add FTE except for adding another para. Andrew has somebody that is interested in taking that spot, that para spot, and the second grade teacher was interested in moving up to third. Anyway, so, all in all, it's pretty good news. I did also, sorry, see, now you opened up floodgates, I'm talking, here we go. Thanks to Jim's excellent communication about enrollment. It has, we've, we are ahead of where we have been in the past, which is crazy town for Kathy, but we would much rather be getting all of this on, on this end rather than in August, so that really, that really was a helpful push.
Great.
Are they doing online or?
Yeah, yeah, I should ask the library if people are coming out there, I bet they are. Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nina's the best, isn't she?
I didn't even get to meet her, but I, yes, she's the best, because she's opened her wonderful facility up to us, yes.
Yeah. Alright, are you done now?
Okay.
Wait, there's more, who's kidding, Buck?
Well, thank you, Dr. Harley, we always appreciate the updates. Okay, standard-based school improvement, Ralston Middle School renovation guaranteed maximum price, and I would take a motion on this one.
Motion to approve the GMP from Whites for the remodel of Ralston Middle School in the amount of $5,307,888.
Excellent, that was Mary with the motion, and Samantha with the second discussion. Thank you, babe.
Just as we go through, again, what's reflected on there is the cost savings that we would see if we went with the previously discussed phase plan that we saw in place. If you want to go through and, and have an idea, if we looked at this already, what the scope of the project is, that's outlined on page 12. And it shows you what the total costs are for those areas and what they end up predicting coming in. In addition, or as a part of that 5 million, we also have another 140,000-ish that are, is put into contingency. So if we run across any issues there, there is money that's put in place, like what we do with all of our different projects.
Questions, comments, concerns, anything else that we would like to discuss as a group before I call the vote? Now is the moment. Alright, Marcy, do your thing.
Ms. Rorty.
Aye.
Mrs. Kraus?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Mrs. Kumru?
Aye.
Mrs. Willey?
Aye.
Mrs. Huff?
Aye.
Excellent, uh, motion passes, sounds like we're going to use White's for another round here, which is not surprising. Alright, next motion on the floor would be for the Karen Western flooring bid, I would take a motion please.
Motion to approve the bid from Universal Flooring in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand three hundred ninety dollars and ninety-eight cents for the flooring project at Karen Western Elementary.
Second.
Alright, we have Mary with the motion and Samantha with the second discussion.
This is just our, our finish up down there, we've got some other exterior painting and things to do there. Um, but this uh will be a project they'll take on over the summer and, and all the classrooms and uh commons areas uh will end up having new flooring in it. So excited to finish that one off too, it's one more, one more building to check off.
Yeah, that is exciting, I can't believe how close we are on so many of these projects. Alright, questions, comments, concerns? Marcy, please call the vote.
Mrs. Kumru?
Aye.
Ms. Rorty?
Aye.
Mrs. Huff?
Aye.
Mrs. Willey?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Mrs. Kraus?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, motion passes. Now it looks like we have another action in front of us with policy for fifty thirty-seven, and I would take a motion please.
Motion to approve policy fifty thirty-seven as written.
Excellent, we have Katie and then Liz. Discussion?
Just per, per our previous, um, previous uh discussion on this policy, uh we had some requests. And then I, I added a part on there since we do have that gaming club, uh that we sponsor there, probably should include that that's an okay use if they're part of that extra curricular activity.
Should we say anything about AI in here at all?
We have an AI. I think that's a separate policy.
We have a separate one on.
Let's send money to the water. Okay, uh, any other further discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. Kumru?
Aye.
Mrs. Huff?
Aye.
Mrs. Willey?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Mrs. Kraus?
Aye.
And Ms. Rorty?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Alright, policy review, Superintendent Buckingham, take us a week.
Okay, so we've got a set of five policies on here. I, I want to thank uh President Richards for her yeoman's work in uh putting together a spreadsheet that I think is really going to help us in, in trying to get back on the right path as far as our policy review schedule. We've got several policies that haven't been reviewed in a long time. Uh, and this uh clear visual that she made up, I think is going to be uh one that'll help Ashley and, and myself out in, in making sure that we're more timely in our review of those policies as they come through. So thanks for doing that, appreciate that part of it. Um, so we'll, we'll try and put this on uh every board meeting that we have, where we're going to review anywhere from, you know, five to ten different policies depending on their length. Um, our next meeting that we have scheduled in February is going to be a really long one. Um, so we may pare that down on the lower end, but we want to try and commit to this so we can get through our policies and get them reviewed. So that we don't have several that are, are five plus years since the last time they've been looked at. Uh, first one we have up here then is policy six oh four nine, use and dissemination of test results. And we don't have any recommended changes at this time on this policy.
Questions, comments? Excellent, keep rolling.
Next one uh is policy two zero zero three, development and education of board members. This one, if, if you can remember when, when you first came back or first came on board, this is one of the policies that we talk about. Uh, as part of the board on, onboarding, to use the word board a bunch of times in a sentence. But this, this is one of those things that talks about the orientation piece. We do ongoing development, which our board, as we can tell by the awards that you've won, does a very uh, very excellent job in that area. And uh as a result, you're all recognized for that earlier this fall. Uh, but it does talk about ongoing education, participation in, in different things, and, and we don't have any recommendations for change at this time.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Three oh six two, uh cooperative efforts whenever possible. Uh, we do participate in a couple of cooperatives, particularly with ESU, ESUCC. There are a couple of items that we purchase through that. And any, anywhere that we can go and find a savings uh by increasing our purchasing power, we're certainly in favor of. No recommendations for change there. Four oh five four might, um, we'll take a little bit of a pause and, and take a little bit closer look at this. This policy is right in line with state statute and requires mandatory reporting uh on our part in any instance that we have that is suspected child abuse. Um, there is some language in there about uh having reasonable suspicion with that. We go a little bit further with that, anytime that we even think there might be uh child abuse, we go ahead and we report it out. And we'll let DHHS uh sort out whether or not it's, it's a legitimate claim or not. Um, but we've, we've got forms, we've got a, what I think is a pretty solid process here uh at the building level. And then at the central office level that not only is, are those documents reported there, but they're also reported up to us so that we know uh when a CPS report or when a, a report to DHHS has been filed. Um, so what we've got in here is in line with statute, um and I would not recommend changes to this policy at, at this time.
Questions, comments? Alright, keep rolling.
Do you know of any times where all that documentation and reporting has kept people from actually reporting abuse?
Uh, not to my knowledge, if we, we know that, that um they have suspicion, we, we require they report it. And that's something that um, you know, our licenses are up for, potentially being revoked if, if we, if we were um neglect to report child abuse, suspected child abuse. So that's, that's one that there's a pretty bright line on it and we always err on the side of caution.
Mike?
We uh, when we do our training with our staff members, uh one of the questions that we get is if I report uh abuse or neglect, is there a possibility that I have to go and testify this? Which is something that our staff members are always a little hesitant to do then. And we always uh tell them that no matter how uncomfortable that makes you feel, uh the child that is living through the abuse is going through is something that is a million times worse than just a momentary period of comfort. And uh that usually puts them into that conversation pretty quickly when they're just looking at the big picture and realize, I've got to do this, uh because it's the good thing to do for this right now.
Hard policy, but glad we have it. Alrighty. We missing a policy?
Fifty fifty-five.
Forty twenty-five's in our list, but not in our. You closed that off?
It did.
The superintendent and the.
That's mine.
I was like, am I crazy? I'm not seeing that either.
Looking for it.
Forty twenty-five's in your list, but not in here.
Oh, yeah, we don't have the attachment on there.
Yeah, let's bring that back around next time.
Yep.
Damn, alright, then we can do fifty fifty-five.
Okay, uh fifty fifty-five, enrollment in kindergarten, um and this again, follow statute. Um, it's, there's requirements on there when uh a child has to start kindergarten. And then there's, there's requirements on there that prevent them from starting it too early. Uh, so we've got a, a policy that's in place uh regarding, um, you know, if they attended another state and they were attending kindergarten, we'll allow them in. If they're planning on moving to another state that allows kindergarten attendance earlier than what we do here, we would allow them in. Or um, there's um, an assessment that, that we give, um, that if they can prove that they've got the skills and they're ready for kindergarten, uh we may allow them to start a little bit early as well with that, so. Other than that, again, pretty straightforward, um, talks about, you know, what the requirements are and how you enroll for kindergarten and don't have recommendations at this point.
So that date in July, is that set by the state?
Alrighty, any other discussion, questions, things you would like to know about any of these policies?
Do we have a lot of kids trying to opt in early for kindergarten or not really?
You know, I don't know if I can answer that very well.
Yes, I don't, I mean, I could look, find the exact answer, but um.
Just a rock, like.
And we are, um, we are waiting until March fifteenth when option enrollment.
Okay.
Closes to respond to those at all, just to see where we are. Right now, we're mostly getting uh pre-K kids that may uh not have gone to their neighborhood school for pre-K. And trying to get those kids back into their neighborhood schools.
Alrighty, I think that wraps up yield policy review. Okay, pre-adjournment information and activities announcements, embryo announcements.
So one thing I would draw the board's attention, uh if you look at our supplemental meeting, um, we saw a PDF in there for Ecosure. That's just something we wanted to recognize our staff over at Mockingbird in the food service department. Uh, they scored a hundred percent on their, their Ecosure, which is um where they come in, they'll, they'll check, they'll check and make sure that they're doing things that, the way they need to as far as sanitation. As far as are they being efficient, the way they're preparing meals, and our ladies over there scored a hundred percent on theirs, so. Just thought we'd recognize them.
Great job, y'all.
And how are they being recognized outside of this evening?
We have to work on that.
Okay.
Jim, remind me, we'll put that in our district, um, yep, shout out.
Glad it's all.
There we go.
Thanks, man.
Alrighty, well, thank you for the folks who uh reviewed the bills tonight, Samantha and Katie, thank you for taking the extra time to do that, always an important job. And in March, hey, it's you and me, alright. Okay, future board calendar, there's a lot of stuff on there, y'all. Okay, so check out all of those items, anybody want to draw attention to any of those things in particular? I know the auto show is always a good time, so I would recommend that. And please get graduation on your calendar now.
And I'm, I'm going to go to DC.
Oh, good, with Masby?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, so Marcy's got me all.
She's already set.
Marcy, Marcy will get you all set.
Alright.
Plane tickets bought, her hotel's ready, she's, she's going.
Alright, thanks, Marcy.
You gotcha.
Jim, do we have an idea on hard learning?
Uh, more to come, there'll be more information coming out soon.
Anything else you want to share with us?
Um, next board meeting will be a special one for you guys, so be prepared.
Oh, jeez.
Bring an extra bag, there will be lots of stuff.
Okay, so that's good.
I have one funny thing too, I heard today that Seymour had thirty-five children out, so maybe in like three years, we had to think about Super Bowl Monday having to be a day off of school as well.
I already gave you the day after Halloween.
That was so gay.
It was an exciting day.
Yes, like, nationwide, they talk about doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Head into executive session here. Alright, y'all, we need to head into executive session, which means I need a motion, please.
Move to adjourn into executive session.
To discuss legal matters.
Second.
Excellent, we got a motion in a second, please call the vote.
Mrs. Huff?
Aye.
Mrs. Willey?
Aye.
Mrs. Richards?
Aye.
Mrs. Kraus?
Aye.
Ms. Rorty?
Aye.
Mrs. Kumru?
Aye.